We'll do a roll call. So Jimmy.
Jimmy O'Connor, present.
Mark Nordquist, present.
Dave Lyons, present.
Mike Harmer, present.
Dale Cook, present.
And we have.
In Town Solicitor.
And we have.
Bill Zolfer, town manager.
All right. And we want to adopt the agenda that was posted that you guys have with you. And any motion to adopt it?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Second by Jimmy. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
See no nays. So we're good with that. The meeting minutes that I emailed you guys. If you could make a motion to approve them or then we'll second and then if we have any changes, we'll discuss.
Motion to approve.
All right. Second, anybody?
Second.
Dale, with a second, any discussion or changes? See none? All in favor of approving the meeting minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
See no nays. So we're unanimous approval of the meeting minutes from the last meeting. Okay, we have one situation we're going to talk about today. We're going to discussion, discussion among us first. And representatives from the town about ordinance and conditional use permit. An application for a restaurant permit of compliance to expand the conditional use of the Dewey Beach Country Club located 1705 Coastal Highway, Dewey Beach, Delaware. Before we open the public hearing, is there any comments? Anybody want to talk about it? Jimmy?
Recuse myself.
Jimmy is recusing himself. Reluctantly accusing, he's accusing himself. Thank you, Jimmy. We thank you very much. And anything else you want to talk about, anybody? See none? Now we'll move to the public hearing, open to public hearing. So I think we have the attorney from the Dewey Beach Country Club that needs to stay remotely. And there he is. I see him on the screen and you've got the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Hopefully?
Very well.
Okay, great. So thanks for allowing me to participate remotely. I tested positive for COVID, so I don't think anyone wants to see me in person. Probably wouldn't want to see me in person anyway, so this will work out well. As you mentioned, I'm here this evening on behalf of my client Dewey Beach Country Club, which operates at 1705 Coastal Highway in Dewey Beach, Delaware. Just by way of background, I represented Mr. Plummer when he purchased the business that was formerly, I believe Surfside, which was before that McShays. Also assisted Mr. Plummer when he applied for COVID outdoor dining in that application process. So I'm intimately familiar with the, the business and what's going on there. As was the case in mid-October, we're here seeking your approval to allow or for a recommendation to allow conditional use for my client to utilize the rear exterior area of its business for outdoor dining, as well as the front exterior area for outdoor dining. You should now have a lot more materials than you did before specifically. And hopefully a plan in front of you that includes all pertinent measurements with respect to the outdoor dining areas, several pictures of both the rear exterior of the restaurant, the rear exterior outdoor dining area, the front exterior outdoor dining area that exists today, as well as some interior photos also. We've also included approval from the landlord, an older survey of the property just to show the meets and bounds, nothing more, nothing less. A yard maintenance contract as well as several letters of support. All in all, it's really my hope and my clients' hope that these materials give you a much better idea of the request and provide you with what may have been desired at your last hearing. Certainly able to answer any questions you may have with respect to the materials. But I would like to focus your attention to what I'll call the, the site plan that outlines basically the, the dimensions of what we're seeking here. And all in all, if you look at the rear portion, which would be at the bottom of that page, my client seeking approval for roughly 1,200 square feet of an enclosed rear patio, which consists of a bench seating area in the front there for eight, as well as eight picnic tables that seat about six people comfortably. An enclosed front patio is also requested, which consists of roughly 232 square feet of patron area and has six, four picnic tables again that seat probably around six comfortably. Both the rear and the front patio or outdoor dining areas are adjacent to doorways allowing for ingress egress. They are both handicapped accessible. There will be no bar seating in either area. And each of the proposed patios complies with setbacks. Finally, I, I think it's important to mention that the rear patio, the only additional lighting that exists there now beyond what's always existed at that business since even when it was McShays are what I would call string lights that you may have on your deck or patio at your own home. Nothing more than that. It is our position that both the rear exterior outdoor dining area and the front exterior outdoor dining area comply with section 18574 of the town code. Each dining area is appropriate position adjacent to the building, as I mentioned, and offers for safe ingress egress to and from the interior of that building. Each location is handicapped accessible, as I had mentioned. Each location is enclosed in the front with what I'll call railing and balusters, if you will, and then landscaping beds in the front, as you can see with that photograph. And the rear, it's enclosed by decking or fencing. As it has been since May of 2022, which is when this was originally approved, the public health, safety morals and general welfare will not be adversely affected. To my knowledge, there have been no recorded incidents, at least none that have been brought to my intention with respect to these areas. There's certainly no music or outdoor speakers proposed. Location is safeguarded through fencing or railing. And there's no request to expand any bar areas outside. The location won't contribute to a traffic problem due to the size of the restaurant. There is no parking requirement for this in the RB2 district. And finally, with respect to again, the fencing and gated enclosures, it's our position that necessary safeguards are provided for the protection of surrounding property persons and neighborhood values. To that end, my client also has no problem abiding by the conditions set forth in 18525 D1A3, which I believe the commission is recommended be included in the other approved conditional uses when going to the town. Now, I, I did listen to the previous hearing. I believe that was October 14th. I do think it's probably behooves us to address both drainage and lighting. As I mentioned before, the only lighting for the rear exterior patio are string lights. They're generally downward facing, but they do exhibit some low voltage light there. But they would be turned off when the patio is closed at 11:00 AM. All other lights in the exterior rear of the, the premises have existed since the business was McShays and thereafter Surfside. With respect to drainage, I think it's important to note that the area where the decking is in the rear, as well as what's beyond that, is grass and grass below that deck. It's probably actually the only area in the surrounding vicinity that's not impervious. Everything else around it is either macadam or pavement or some derivation of that. So there, there really is no reason that this deck or this particular property would contribute to any drainage issues because it actually can't allow water to basically drain and, you know, go into the subsurface there. So as a result, it is our position that, that this request is consistent with the conditional use requirements, but certainly happy to address any questions you may have. And again, thank you.
All right. Thank you. I, I don't have any questions, Mark.
No questions.
Dave?
No question.
Yeah?
Anyone?
So there was a letter, there's some letters that we received or a letter.
Yes.
Do we want to make mention of those and then give Mr. Carey an opportunity to respond?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you want, I accumulated what was said to me, so I can just go through.
Thank you.
So we received favorable letters from Chris Mascara, who is at 104 Bayside Court, Unit 2. Favorable from Theodore Giajealous, I'm sorry, I mispronounced that, who is an owner at Opal Units N101 and 102 and, and 201. Anthony and Carol Gioriels, Unit N204 at the Opal condominium. Daniel Noel McLoane, I apologize, at 207 Anchor Bay is also favorable. Gregory Sheridan from the Opal condo also expressed favorable. Cindy Sansom did support the back area, but had some concerns on the four tables at the front area, specifically around usage, I would say. I'm happy to read that for the group.
That, that'd be great. Yeah.
Let me just get that. Okay, here we go. We live next to the country club. The proposed backyard does not bother us. Our problem is, is with the proposed front. It is not for eating like Woody's, but a party spot with one table. Just see drinking and smoking. The proposed floor plan calls for four tables. We don't care about the back, but please don't quadruple our issues in the front. The town put rules in 2015 to close their door at 10:00 PM and that never happened. And the parking motorcycles next to the entrance is a fire hazard waiting to happen. So that was the comment, the only negative from, that we got from Cindy Sansom.
So there, there is, there is only one table out there today and there is a motorcycle parked by the door. It doesn't block the door, but I don't know what the concern, you know, is to that. But I, I'll defer that to the town, you know, code enforcement. They can go do whatever they want to look at that. It's not planning and zoning. So, you know, as far as A, you know, how many tables are supposed to be out there and when, you know, we're going to permit, if we say, you know, vote to recommend to the town commissioners, the four as shown in the plan, the expectation is there would be four there and we'd hope that the management would, of the, the restaurant would manage it appropriately. Because, you know, I do see crowds out there when I walk there and I don't really like it myself, but nothing I can do about it. But it does, it does go in line with the, the writers' issue. So maybe between the town and, and, and the restaurant, you guys could work out some kind of thing where you discourage the loitering out front and make sure that there, if we're, if there's supposed to be four tables, if there's four tables and not a party spot, like they're saying. Because it sounds like, and what happens is people coming go out there, they go out there to smoke and then there's no tables. You know, nobody eating at the table. So if I'm the bar or the restaurant owner, you know, or whatever the manager, you shouldn't let people loiter out there. If it's a dining area, it's a dining area. It's not a smoking area. And it's not a place to park motorcycles and stuff like that. So it either is or is not. We're going to make our recommendation based on what we see. It's not an issue for planning zoning, as far as I'm concerned. We hear the complaint. I truly hope that the town does something about it. And also the town should look into the, you know, 10:00 PM, since you're here, Bill, I'd say the town should look into the 10:00 PM thing. I don't, I don't know if that's correct or not, but if they're supposed to close something at 10, that might be something else. But that's not planning and zoning function. Thank you.
All right. So let's, let's give Mr. Carey an opportunity to speak to that if he wishes.
If you wish, you're up, Mr. Carey.
You know, one, I, I would just ask that you consider what we have in our application, which is the, the four tables in front for outdoor dining. Certainly your, your concerns can be relayed to the establishment. And there are conditions, I believe, in, in the D1 conditions that do prohibit, you know, standing and loitering in some of these outdoor dining areas. I'm not sure the exact specifics without pulling that up. But nevertheless, would, would certainly relay those issues to my client.
Excellent. Thank you. I, I have no other comment. Anyone else? Any more comments?
I just, one thing I just do want to mention is that there was a letter of support from the landlord as well, from Natasha Jones, at the Pyrus Realty Group also supporting the changes. So they do have, they have spoken to the landlord and they have that support as well.
So I've emailed most of those, if not all of them, to the team here and to our commissioners. So with that being said, and no more comments from us with, if we have any more folks, first of all, we'll go virtual. Anybody on virtual want to talk to us? Kate? All right. Okay. Yeah, you want to let, let him in and we'll, okay. Anthony, you want to say anything? Are you good with what we read or we know you're in support? Because we think you are. Your microphone's blocking you from talking. Anthony. All right. While you're working on that, is there anyone else that wants to come in?
I'm sorry, it was on, it was Anthony. It was on mute. I apologize. I have no comment.
All right. Thank you, Anthony. Thanks for your information. Anyone else? Kate?
Mike, can I ask Blake something?
Yeah.
Blake, are you still there?
I am.
Blake, although it's not required of you, because we're only here to decide whether to recommend that you meet the standard as all other restaurants have already met and we've already recommended. Have, has the owner had a chance to, or any reason to, to talk to the neighbors and ask them? Meaning you had one neighbor that came in and complained about certain items. And some of those items, almost all of those items were items that the town had code enforcement on, not, not for us. But have you all had a chance to talk to that neighbor?
I have personally not had a chance to, to speak to that neighbor. I'm not sure if Mr. Plummer has, but you know, certainly in, in my presentation, I hope that the matters that you can address or should be concerned with were, were appropriately addressed here.
Right. All right. Now.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So you talked about the lighting, Mr. Carey, being that string lighting. So is your, is your client willing to accept a limitation that says no lighting other than that lighting that is presently there or, or similar string lighting will be permitted?
Sure. I, I think the, you know, we certainly do not intend to have any lighting that's pointed towards any residences or anything else like that. You know, as I mentioned, there, there is lighting that's existed there for, well before this was my client's establishment. I'm not sure exactly what that lighting is, but with respect to the outdoor dining or patio area, the lighting that, that's there is sufficient for it. So.
So I, I remember from, from the last conversation, I believe it was motion, motion sensor lighting, that every time somebody came out, flooded the lights, right?
Yeah.
The floodlights were the concern raised from the, the neighbor. I mean, that was the big, I think, primary concern.
Okay, so limiting the lighting to the string lighting would not be appropriate because there's some existing lighting out there.
Right. So we can't. So I mean, that, the only concern would be, is that something, Mr., and I think Mr. Plummer expressed, he tried to address that issue with the neighbor before. The lights point straight down. You know, they're only open when somebody triggers them, but they are open anytime somebody goes in or out of the building in the back. So.
Right.
I think that was the primary concern.
Well, the problem is that with all the people out there now that will be at the tables, that lighting will become, will come on, off and on a lot. Now, I don't know whether it's something that we should address, but it's probably something the town should address with the neighbor.
So, so will the string lighting be turned off at 11 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then the area out front, there was a reference and, and I know that we've got the building official, Dawn Hinks, with us, but there was a reference in the Sandstone letter to the area in the front not being permitted to be used after 10 o'clock. Is, is that a, is that an accurate? Does anyone know if that's a condition that's currently attached to the use?
No, I, I do not. So if anybody does, I defer that issue to the town. Like I just asked Mrs. Zolfer, maybe you could just look into that. There's a passed approval. Dawn can dig it up and see.
Well.
You know, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna.
Is any portion of the area out front permitted to be occupied as a use that's unrelated to the COVID expansion?
I do not. I think that the only thing that's being related to the COVID expansion is the four tables.
But is there any other, is there any other area out front other than the COVID expansion? What, what is, what is Ms. Sandstone referring to?
She's referring to the four tables that, that basically she's saying that when, what I think she's saying is that when the, when the conditional use was approved, because this came through planning and zoning a couple of times, I think. There's been a bunch of different places, a bunch of different names. And maybe, I know at least once I was on the board when it came through. And there was a list of conditions that we used to put and all those, a lot of those conditions that we were always concerned with, the town just codified, you know, so that, you know, we, we don't really have to deal with them. So we just refer to them now. But, and now I think it's like the, the 11 o'clock might be what we're, what we've determined. 10 might be an old, an old condition that Dawn could look at, they'll, you know, and figure out that they're supposed to close at 10 instead of 11.
But I think if we're approving something tonight, it says 11, it should be approved if it says 10. So I would ask Dawn, do you have any, any idea about this 10 o'clock reference? You don't want to be asking, Mike?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Hi, this is Dawn. No, I do not. All of my understanding is that the tables up front were approved due to the COVID expansion through the prior town manager, which started approximately end of 2019, beginning of 2020 with the governor's order. As far as any other conditions and so forth, I am totally unaware of that. That happened, if there were any, it was with the prior building official. So in order to answer your question properly, I would have to research and looking into the records to find the details.
All right. So what, what I'd recommend on that is that we go, you know, if we're going to make a recommendation today, we make the recommendation and we add a note to it that town hall look into the 10 o'clock versus 11. So if we say today that we want them to close 11:00 PM and, and it conflicts with the 10, then we'll, we'll say that the recommendation should be 10. You know, just because it was what was on, on the books to start with. Right? We're allowed to do that, right?
No, I think we can note that. And then between now and when the commissioner's here, we can get that, that figured out. I'm, I'm guessing, Mr. Carey, that this, this operation or this use doesn't have to close at 10 o'clock. Right?
Are you asking if?
I'm guessing, I'm guessing that the, that, that this restaurant doesn't close at 10 o'clock.
Correct.
So it could very well be that that's just a mistake in representation made by Ms. Sandstone.
Yeah, we just got that. I mean, I, I think the email came in like today and I just happened to see it around 3 o'clock.
So the conditions, yeah, the conditions to expand include a provision that says you, you got to continue to comply with whatever conditions were originally placed on, on the conditional use. So.
Yeah.
And I, I believe it's. D1.
We're putting the same conditions that we put on the other.
Yeah.
On this.
Right. We're put the same, but we're going to have to put a footnote that if the 10 o'clock prevails, the 10 o'clock will be prevailed, be part of our recommendation. If the 10 o'clock is a typo error or something, then we'll just do, you know, go along with the 11 like everybody else.
Those recommendations were read after for everybody else. Maybe we.
How about I read those? How about, just so we go through one more time?
All right, hold on, hold on. Let's finish the public hearing first. Let's do that. So any more discussion on that and we'll go back.
I just, I just have one more thing. So reference to the concern about the moped pedal on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
In the past, they had parked on the property of the establishment right in front of it. Not on the public sidewalk. Cause I saw those and I talked to the police department and code enforcement about that. Now with the deck out there, if they do park those mopeds out on the public sidewalk, it will be taken. We'll ask them to move them first, right? We don't want, and if they don't, they'll be taken in eventually and it could be towed. I doubt that would happen. We would try to get them to move it first.
That's very admirable and a great game plan. Thank you, Bill.
Well, additionally, if, if the, if, if the area adjacent to allow for two more tables is is utilized for a patron area, it's going to have to be barricaded, right?
It's, it's, yeah, the area where the tables are, it's got a, it's, it's got a kind of fence. It's a barricade.
Right. Well, you have to have some, you have to have something. That's what I mean. So won't that have the effect of blocking people from utilizing it for parking?
Yeah, yes, poss, well, yes, it, it should be, but, but you, you got to understand the only way to get to and from the servers and get in and out is that, you know, is that, is, is kind of like the sidewalk. You walk out of that front door and it's open to that eating area. So somebody could push their moped and park it there, but they're not going to. Their, the moped today was parked, I think, I would say it's probably on their property to the left, not blocking the door. So that's a town, you know, code issue and they've already been looking at it. And it's, it's not something we're concerned with.
So, so once they barricade this area off, it's going to be required to be used as seated dining only.
That's correct. But the, the, the issue is, is that that only access door, you know, you walk out of the door, it's, you know, it's open. So if nobody's sitting at those tables and it's 10 o'clock at night and it's maybe Wednesday night, not a busy night, people are going to come out there and sit on those tables and smoke and stuff. And that's what happens. So, you know, the thing is, is that's a management issue. So management needs to make sure that there aren't people hanging out there and doing that. And I, you know, it's a code enforcement on top of that. So.
Because we don't permit, most of these areas.
Right, right. And you shouldn't, but you know, it's, it's, it's again, these are small businesses with those doors, these front doors. And it's a management thing. The bar owners and the bar managers need to, or the restaurant owners and managers should, you know, encourage their patrons to not hang out there.
Just one other comment, and I'll say this at the commissioners meeting we have it. So once all the initial uses are approved, if they are approved, the town plans will sending a letter out to remind each one of these businesses about their new outside seating areas with the 11 o'clock, no smoking, no outside amplified music. They have to start clearing at least by 11 o'clock. We're going to send them out another letter just to remind them. So then when we do come by and talk about it, they've already got their warning.
What a great plan. Thank you, Bill. That'll be very helpful, I'm sure, going forward. Because you want to make sure that us, you know, that the town allowing the great outside dining, that it is indeed outside dining and not outside partying.
Mr. Chairman, this is Dawn. Um, yes, I was just given the ordinance for this particular property prior to the COVID. And one of the conditions, it is in ordinance 422. And there was no patio or exterior service permitted.
This is an expansion.
Yeah.
It's expansion.
So.
Thank you.
For that ordinance, which became effective February 2000.
Oh man, it's 2022. I've been hanging around here that long. You too, Dale. All of us, I guess. Mark, you. Phew. All right. Thank you. Anyone else virtually? Kate? All right. We have some people in the room. Anybody want to talk in the room? Public, public speak about the facility?
Is this Mr. Plummer?
No, there's nobody.
Okay.
Okay, well, good. We, you've heard what we're talking about. So I'm sure you'll take care of all that stuff.
Would you please, so the others include?
Afternoon, everybody. I'm speaking on behalf of a couple of things you guys said. As far as the scooter parking goes out there, we have been in talks with Jeremiah's convenience store on the corner right there to take over what is currently their bicycle rack to assist for additional parking for the scooters to go up there. So they're not congesting our front area out there. So that is currently in the works.
You have to go over the parking lot to get to that. I mean, the sidewalk to get to that, right?
Yes.
That means taking a scooter over, over or motorcycle.
Yeah, they are basically driving up on the sidewalk to get in front of that, which I understand does become an issue. So we are working on, because it affects us as well as deliveries and everybody coming into the alleyway to get to our back deck. So that's an issue for us as well that we're, we're on top of that we plan on addressing very, very soon. The other thing, the smoking, we've, we closed the back deck well before 11 o'clock. We've been trying to get everybody in there just so it doesn't bother neighbors. We know it gets very, could become noisy out there late at night. So we're trying to get everybody in there as early as 10 o'clock as opposed to 11 o'clock. The lights, as you guys addressed earlier, they are pointed downwards, even the floodlights now. And we are working on putting additional covers on them so they don't point into the neighbors' windows to keep them up, whatever might be an issue for them at this point. What's the other thing? The smoking and the drinking out front. That we've been trying to chase everybody inside early for that as well, 10 or 11 o'clock to get them indoors. Issue with that is even if they're not on our deck, a lot of people are still standing on the sidewalk out there, even though they're off of our property. We just don't want to be conflicted with that as well. If they're smoking on the sidewalk or we, we don't want to be accused of them doing. Uh, we just don't want to be conflicted with that as well. If they're smoking on the sidewalk or we, we don't want to be accused of them doing that on our property. You know what I'm saying?
Uh, but if you expand your patron area, now that area is going to be in all likelihood, not permitted to be a smoking area.
Yes, 100%. Yes. No smoking at all. Uh, for, for, we, we, I'm not a fan of smoking to begin with, so I don't want anybody. So I'm the first person to chase everybody inside when they start doing that.
But you can't chase smokers inside.
Well, you know what I mean? Chase the, put the cigarettes out and keep everybody inside before 11 o'clock.
All right. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
So will the string lighting, can that be turned off? The floodlight might remain?
Turned off altogether?
Well, that's a question. Would, would you turn it off at 11 o'clock or leave it on?
So that's automatically turns off at 11 o'clock, no matter what.
Okay.
Um, even if nobody's ordered to do it, it's on the motion where it turns itself off at 11 o'clock. We usually turn it off before 11. We just have to have lighting out there during business hours.
When it's being used.
So somebody hasn't hurt themselves. So you can see where they're going out there.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Uh, that closes the public hearing.
You can ask Mr. Carey if he wants to elaborate on anything he just.
Oh, Mr. Carey, before we close the public hearing, do you want to elaborate on anything?
I, I don't believe it's necessary. No.
All right. Thank you. Closed public hearing. Um, now we're going to, uh, discuss and possibly go to make a recommendation about a draft ordinance regarding a conditional use permit and application uh, for the Dewey Beach Country Club, uh, and we'll be looking for a motion. If anyone can make a motion, if you're willing.
I may all make a motion on the conditional use as shown.
All right. With the conditions.
The conditions that everything is.
Dave, Dave is going to read.
And I'm going to read you right now. So the inclusion's the code sections 185 dash 25 D1 A1 and 185 dash 25 D1 A3. And additionally, we added no smoking, no live entertainment, no public access after 11 p.m. Uh, I'll put this down here, although we go round and round. All facilities must comply with bathroom standards in accordance with public health department standard requirements. All outdoor spaces to be cleaned up before closing. And the only other one here that may impact this one is all previous conditions which were approved by the town for the establishment remain in effect.
With, with the exception of no out, outside patio or whatever that statement was Dawn read.
Right, right.
So this is. Because that wouldn't apply.
Yeah, right.
Primarily the issue is that whether it's, if there is something around 10 o'clock versus 11 o'clock.
Yeah. So that's Mark's motion, I guess. Mark's.
Yes, that's correct.
Motion for a second of that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Dave will second it. Now we discuss. Any discussion?
I just have one comment. Our concern last time, my concern last time was that we didn't have enough information to make a good decision. I just want to applaud Mr. Plummer and, and Mr. Carey for providing us all the information here and trying to step up and address all the concerns that, that people have raised. So I just want to say thank you for that. Makes our decision much easier.
And, and as far as the, the string lighting goes, is there a possibility of putting a sconce over the top of the light? In other words, like right now, it's just a bare ball. You know, a lot of times they make a little sconce here. That would push that light down and maybe not let it reflect up as much.
And we see the manager, manager has said they've already been ordered. So perfect. Uh, so that's a discussion. Any more discussion?
Mike, does, does this mean the ordinance that we have here in front of us now is what we're voting on?
Yes, with the, the wordings, uh, because these ordinances, I don't think had those special conditions that Dave read. So it's.
Right.
Yeah. So it adds that with a note to the town to look into 10 versus 11 issue. Well, thread to look into.
It does seem that Dawn has addressed that saying there is no, there's no outside permitted use and there's no 10 o'clock closing of this establishment in their existing conditional use permit.
Makes sense. All right. Looks like we're up for a vote. Uh, turn to Mark.
Um, yeah, yes.
All right, Dave?
Yes.
Myself, yes?
I think it'd be good for the town. Yes.
And I'll, I'll, that's why I'm voting yes also. I think it's good for the town. Thank you, Dale. Uh, that'll conclude that, uh, ordinance, uh, discussion. And now we have comments by any of the commissioners?
No comment.
No comment.
No comment.
Um, motion to adjourn?
No move. Second.
All right. All okay, Ron?
Aye.
All right. Done. All right, you guys. Thank you very much.